Okay. This meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. Before public comments, just like to welcome Steph Schiava, who is sitting in for Megan Duty, who is on her way to Oregon for the National Cross Country Championship. We certainly wish her well. So move to public comments.
I'm not quite as prepared as I'd like to be. I can't tell you how much I support your athletic fields, particularly since of the work you've done in tightening the purse strings of the school budget. And that makes me feel a lot better. It's not a direct bearing, but it makes me feel better about it. And I think it's very, very important to focus, give focus to all, give everyone an opportunity for, to enjoy their high school experience. And this is one way to focus and bring in people that you might not otherwise. And I think it's so important for people to be enthusiastic about school. And some of the people that excel at sports aren't quite as academically enthusiastic. I know I certainly wasn't. And this is one way to engage them, interest them, and focus them. And so I think the time has come, and I'm looking forward to coming back to talking about the modulars. [laughter] I'll be next year. But thank you for the opportunity. And I want you to, I think the time is coming. It's time that we got to it.
Okay. And you're Bill Hall.
Yes, sir. I'm so sorry. Jay Goose has to do the same thing. When I got done speaking the other night, I went up by five minutes, and he said, "No, you can finish." I said, "No, no, I wouldn't."
Okay. Thank you very much, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Are there public comment? None? Okay. Approval of minutes? Could I have a motion to approve the November 19th, 2014 regular minutes?
Make a motion to approve the November 19th regular minutes.
Moved by Al, seconded by Denise. Are there corrections to those minutes? Kenny?
I have three very small points. In public comments, Jeanne Sowers was talking about moving the start time later, and it's at both the middle school and at the high school, not just at the middle school. Then just that voting part two with Ed abstaining because he wasn't here, so the vote would be six, zero, one. And then the last part, and maybe Dennis will confirm that, but when he was speaking about morale, he was referring to his morale being astronomical and not referring to the staff at Moharamet's morale being astronomical.
Is that correct, Dennis?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Are there corrections? Okay. With those changes, so Lori, you have those?
Yep.
Great. With those changes, we have a vote. All in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in affirmative. Motion passes. Announcements, accommodations, district?
Todd Allen from the high school. I did want to recognize we had five stringed instrument players who were named to All State Music Festival, which is, we haven't had stringed instrument players getting named, so it's five more than we had last year. So it's very exciting. So I do want to take a minute to commend Rupabhat, Shavika Agarwal, Morgan Keller, Elena Todd and Colleen Todd, who are all state musicians. And there actually are a number of others for other activities that I haven't heard whether they made it. We often get kids in the choral and the band, but stringed instruments is new for us. So those are the ones that I know right now, but very exciting. And that will be sometime in the late spring. It's usually, it's April is the music festival. I also want to commend a bridge team. We have a bridge club. It's a combination of middle school, high school, bridge club, but there were two high school bridge players combined with two middle school bridge players that won the North American Bridge Championship Youth Swiss Teams Tournament this past weekend, which is pretty cool. Two middle school kids, Gwyneth Crossman and Amelia Demopolis, combined with Enan Guo and Jamie Demopolis formed the winning team. So they came back with a trophy as the team champion. It was pretty exciting. Tom mentioned before, our student school board rep, Megan Duty, is off, in fact, she flew out late this afternoon to Oregon. Give her a couple of days to get her feet under her, and she runs in the national championships this Saturday. Very exciting. She's, it's her first foray into national competition, so it's pretty, pretty cool. And then lastly, I just want to say we had our first presentation, or first major presentation of the Athletic Fields Project Monday night. A great article in Foster's, if people haven't had a chance to check it out. It was in Tuesday's Foster's. But I also wanted to just mention that we have a website set up. It's www.OrBobcats.com. And that's a great place, I guess you don't have to do the www anymore, I don't know why I mentioned it. OrBobcats.com. But it's a great place to get information on the field project. It also has a link for donations, pledges, and how can you get involved in helping us educate the community about this project. It will be the place that we're going to just continue to put information. The video of the presentation Monday night will be going on there right away, so there will be plenty of information to be had. And there will be informational brochures all over the community for people to pick up in the coming weeks, months, leading up to the March vote. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Jay Rashad, principal of the middle school. Just to follow up with the bridge club, thanks Todd for announcing that. But you know Lisa Allison for doing the great work with our enrollment projections. Lisa started the bridge club, I think it was like three or four years ago. We had several students after school on Fridays when we don't have a late bus. Welcome you to stop by if you know how to play bridge or want to learn. Now we have like close to 30 to 40 students every Friday saying after school playing bridge. Really impressive stuff, and all the credit goes to Lisa. She's done an exceptional job. Our PTO is really busy this month. We have a youth night out tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00. You can drop this child off, and we'll supervise them for a couple hours. We also have our book fair going on right now at the middle school. The PTO organizes and runs that. And our holiday bazaar is also this weekend at the middle school. I know there's a lot of fairs going on, but all these three activities benefit our PTO, which do a great job supporting my students at the middle school. I learned today, hard of the press, that our middle school was, got a spotlight school status again, which is a great honor. I mean, that means we have exemplary middle school practices at the middle school, so I feel very fortunate about that. And concert season has started up. We have several concerts upcoming. We have a big concert tomorrow night, and one of the sections playing, I believe, is our strings, so I'm really looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Do I have a question?
Sure.
What time does the concert start?
Seven o'clock.
Thank you.
Seven o'clock. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. Carrie Vash from Mastway. We also have a few events coming up in this busy month of December. I'd like to note that on Monday, the 8th, we have our winter concert. It will be hosted here at the high school under the leadership of Pam Felber. Seven o'clock for our third and fourth grade choruses. Students will be by grade level, third and then fourth afterwards, I believe. We also have one of our great events that I personally love. It's, our third graders take part in the Ellis Island Simulation. It's a great presentation. I welcome you all, if you have a time to come on over. I'll get the time of day specifically to you when it's going to happen, but the kids really enjoy that. I know we have a lot of parents that take part in the simulation, and they come and they, you know, really act out the whole Coming to America. So it's a great, great event. That's on Thursday, the 18th of December. We also have, that I know I've mentioned before, but is something that we hold near to our hearts, is our expression sessions. What this is, is a chance for kids to get up on stage and for two minutes, show their talents. It can be hula hooping, it can be roller skating, telling jokes, singing, sometimes multiple repetitions of songs, but that might be popular this year. But it is fantastic. It's amazing to see the kids have the confidence that they have to get up on stage and showcase their personal talents that they may not show every day in their academic world. So we have two dates for that, the 19th and the 22nd. Again, we have those times on the website. We've really been working to put everything consistently on the website. And then I'd really like to put a praise out to some of our staff members that each year we try to do a few things to help out in the community. And actually, I'd like to thank Judy George, who puts many of these things together. This year, she did this last year, I believe, as well. On Saturday, the 20th, a number of the staff at Mastway are going to be donating and serving food at the Salvation Army in Portsmouth. So that's looking to be a great turnout. Folks signed up very quickly, and it's a nice way to help others in our community. Lastly, I'd like to note that I was greeted on Monday morning with a fantastic donation from a family of ours, the Pratt family. And I received this letter from Sean and Stephanie. It just basically says, "Please accept this donation to the Mastway School as a token of our appreciation to the faculty and staff. This bell was a fixture on Lauren and Riley's grand, great-great-grandfather's ship during the turn of the century. It was used during prohibition, going between the U.S. and Canada in the Northeast." And they said it would be honored if this is a bell would be used as a recess bell outside the schoolyard as a way to alert the children. Our children thoroughly enjoy their experiences at Mastway School. And they provided us with some pictures of the ship, which is pretty cool. And I'd be glad to pass these around so you can take a look at them. And then, just so you can see, the bell as it was, and the girls worked on totally polishing it up. It is gorgeous. It really is. So I will pass these around, and then I'll just get them ready at the end of the meeting. But it's really this big. It is so heavy and very, very loud. So I said to the staff, you know, "I'm going to ask you for some, we should be hanging this." And, you know, the girl said, you know, "Maybe not right outside of the library, because that would be a little distracting." So we'll come up with a great place for it, but it's just an amazing way for our families to share their families and always be a part of Mastway. So a big thank you to the Pratt family and to the girls for their hard work, and it's been great. So I'll just pass these around if you'd like to take a look. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Carrie. Just maybe before Dennis speaks, I hear we're having problems with our audio, but the sound is being recorded for further broadcast, so we will be recorded.
You mean, they can't see me?
They can see if they can't hear you. Yeah, yeah.
Two things I'd like to talk about. First of all, Dennis Harrington, principal of Moharamet. Science Friday will conclude this Friday with 27 kids climbing walls at Hampshire Hall. But that's only the beginning. At the end of the night, all 57 kids will gather at Moharamet for a party. And prior to that, Carrie will be with me as we go through the last session of Science Friday and talk with the staff there about how to reconfigure Science Friday for Mastway in the spring, which is really something that we've been, both of us have been working towards for a couple of years. So that's good information. The second thing, my staff and I tomorrow, tomorrow will be planning a series of events leading up to the smarter balance assessment, so that we don't overemphasize smarter assessment, smarter balance. What am I supposed to call that? Not smarter balance.
Smarter balance.
Smarter balance, with an D D at the end of it. So we're going to do a BAC plan that answers the question, if the staff and children are ready to take the assessment, what will happen between tomorrow and the first assessment day? And we begun by doing a lot of brainstorming. We'll sit together for two to three hours, put together a plan that the entire staff will carry out.
Thank you, Dennis. Board comments? Denise?
Yes, I attended the presentation on the fields upgrade this week, and I really want to thank Todd Allen and Corey Parker, the athletic director, for an excellent presentation. It was very informative. I also want to thank the coaches that took time to explain their perspective. And I strongly encourage anybody, you know, to, who's got questions about this, I felt it was really thorough, and it is being played both on our Channel 95 station, as well as Todd was mentioning, the website at OrBobcats.com. And it's a great way to find out why, you know, why now, what does it involve, a lot of questions answered, so thank you.
There are announcements? I have one. The National Council, National Council of Teachers of English met a couple weeks ago, and the Oyster River District was really, really, I can't talk, really well represented. Nate Grove was on a panel that I was on, so we spoke to 130 people, and Nate was fantastic. Also attending and presenting were Linda Reeve, Emily Geltz, from the community, Ralph Fletcher, Kathy Collins, Beth Oshansky, Shawna Copla, and I need to mention Silas Barwell, who was featured in a video in a session where he talks about his reading process. And it was really stunning to see the skill and attention he gives to his own reading, so very, very, we were very well represented at that conference. Other comments? Okay. Assistant Superintendent report?
Good evening. Couple things, just to keep you up to date. Our K-5 math committee has continued to meet. We have another meeting on Monday. We started to work on the second part of our evaluation of different resources. The second part is on indicators of quality, so we're looking for, other than alignment, we're looking to see what are the, what do the resources look like for teachers, what are the resources for students, the staff, and on the committee, all created, all of us contributed to creating the criteria of what we thought a quality resource would have. And then that got put into a table, and we're going to look over that and just confirm that that's, these are the qualities that we hope to have in a resource as we move forward. All staff will be involved in the next steps as they look across the different resources that we have to see if the criteria is met, are there some that meet the criteria better, and then hope to move forward to making a decision in March is when we'll do the final decision. As Dennis said, we've started some initial smarter balanced assessment discussions. Each building is, and with the principals and teachers are looking to create a plan of how they'll go about kind of preparing for smarter balance to ensure that students have success, as much success as we can with an assessment that we've never taken online on a new set of standards. So with what we do know, trying to prepare our students and for us to be prepared as best we can. And then I just wanted to bring attention to, you put in your folders, a professional development needs assessment that we do every two years. It's part of a requirement for Title II-A, which is our professional development grant that we get through the state. And we'll do it again, the survey will be, professional development needs will be collected again this coming spring to early summer, May-June. That helps inform the decision-making in that grant to justify how that money is being utilized, so. But we, tends to happen every two years, to allow some things to take place, get some, get some legs on it to help, help staff with professional development needs.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure, sir.
On the, the math stuff, is there a teacher training component to every one of those programs? I mean, would that be one of the, regardless of which program is implemented, would there be a teacher training piece to it?
That was part of the criteria, that the staff, they wanted professional development to make sure that there was enough professional development that would allow for staff to feel fully informed and trained on the program, or resource, if it's modules or a textbook, whatever it may be.
Okay. Thank you.
What's differentiation?
Differentiation, it, so it allows us to, if you have a lesson, it allows to meet different needs in your classroom. So you alter that lesson to make sure that different students, who might be at different levels of learning, can be successful at that lesson.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you. Superintendent's report?
None this evening, Mr. Chair.
Business Administrator?
I provided you with an update on the current year budget in your packet. Each category, for the most part, all the salaries and benefits have been encumbered, and what's left is discretionary accounts and operations. Questions? Pretty close to where we were last year.
I had a question in terms of, and this looks forward to one of the retirement incentive. My understanding from something you said earlier in a previous meeting was that the money, the amounts, the incentives, the $20,000 would come out of this year's budget. Is that correct?
Could, correct.
Could, yeah.
I wouldn't suggest all of them.
Okay.
But yes.
Okay. And there would be, is there money in the surplus or unexpended, anticipated unexpended balance to cover seven or eight retirements?
As we get closer to the end, we'll have a better take on that. But one of the places you do have money that's not in here is the local government center, Health Trust. That hasn't been impacted in here yet, so that is another pool of money you could use for that.
Okay.
Which is around 400,000, so.
Okay.
That would be the intent, to do that.
Okay.
Use this year's funds, because then you'll recognize the savings in the next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Makes sense? Other questions?
Other questions? Kenny?
I'm just trying to understand numbers and kind of looking at where percentages are under, where they're over, but even more looking at kind of, kind of the net dollar figures. It, and again, this is to inform budget. It seemed with Para's that we were off more than with most groups, though.
Yeah.
And just is there, both with subs for Para, and then the, the regular Para's not subs, is?
Yeah. I think it's based on the need that we have this year. We've just not had as many, we don't have as many positions in the budget as we need. I think we had a couple of additional Para's for tuition students, and we will receive reimbursement for that. And we wouldn't have budgeted for that, so that's part of that, so.
It's a kind of unanticipated need.
Yes.
And you can't, I get it.
Yes.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Other questions?
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Okay. Steph, I don't know if you have a report from the Student Senate, or is that?
Sorry. The Student Senate is currently looking at the block days and possibly planning to change the block days that are in the high school right now.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Discussion items. Okay. The distinguished service award. My understanding is that's been, starting last year, that was chosen by the leadership team, so would you want to bring us up to date on that?
Just the fact that it's time to do it.
Okay.
And we'll bring it to the leadership team. It was a board responsibility at one point until last year.
Mm-hmm.
So it's that time again, and so we'll start canvassing the leadership team for potential candidates and bring the nominee back to you.
Great. Warrant article update, we got in our packet and this afternoon through email, an updated, slightly revised draft of the 2015 school warrant articles.
And if I could just, before Sue starts talking about the language in the warrant articles, you might recall that last year, we all kind of got a little confused by being relatively new to the whole process in New Hampshire. And we had the public hearing. And logic would dictate, when you have a public hearing, you're reacting to the public's comments. But when you get to June 14th with your budget, and you're presenting it to the, January 14th, and you get, and when you present the budget, your ability to alter those warrants is over. Only deliberative session can it be altered. So as we're discussing these warrants tonight, at the next meeting, and even possibly the first meeting in January, if you're not finished with them, this is your chance to do whatever altering that you all want to do, because once we get to that public hearing on the 14th of January, the only place they can be changed, that deliberative session. And we all kind of got confused about that as a board and as a superintendent last year. And I just wanted to remind everybody that this is the place where we do that work. Sue and I spent quite a lot of time with Article III, trying to make it make sense. Interestingly, in our conference call with our attorney today, trying to make it make sense, she actually alluded to the fact that these warrant articles sound like gibberish. So.
The lawyer said that?
Yeah.
Yes.
The lawyer said that.
Yes. So the crafting of trying to, we have to meet a state criteria in the crafting of these warrant articles, which really kind of frustrates the board and the public, because as you read the warrant articles, you're unsure what it is it's trying to say. So we tried today to try to put all the right pieces in the right place, and then we called the attorney and told her what we were doing, and she was okay with that. One of the questions that Tom actually raised was putting the aggregate total of the project into the warrant article. And I actually was concerned about it as well, and we, that was the other question that we had with the school's attorney today. And basically, she said, "You have to put the total cost in, because even though it's not all being raised by taxpayers, you have to have an appropriated amount that you can expend that makes sense." Todd has raised $300,000 outside of us asking the taxpayers for their contribution. You're the trustees of that $300,000, and you have to have the authority to spend that $300,000. So now we're going to ask Fort, to the friends of the Oyster River Track, to raise an additional $500,000. So that has to be captured in this warrant article. Otherwise, as we go forward, if, say, we only, the warrant article only said 1.7 in bond and $300,000 that's been raised, Fort and Todd and Corey could raise $1 million more. We couldn't spend a penny of it. So we're trying to capture the actual cost of what we think the project's going to cost, inclusive of what we'd be asking the taxpayers to raise, which is 1.7, and what we'd be asking fundraising to raise, which is another $800,000. And we also have to articulate in this warrant the first year's payment. So that's why all of these pieces are in there, and this is the time that the board gets to say, you know, "I know what you're trying to say here, but I'm not sure it's as clear as it needs to be. Is there a better way of verbalizing it?" We would take your suggestions, if the board's in agreement, and run them past our attorney before we would ever try to articulate it into a revised warrant for the next meeting. This is very, very litigious, and I wish that we could write it in layman's terms so that everybody would understand exactly what we're trying to do. But unfortunately, we have to follow these very difficult, structurally, grammatically rules. I mean, Tom probably looks at it as a English professor and says, "Oh, my God, this is such nonsense." But that's kind of the ground rules we're working with. So having talked about that a little bit, I'll turn it over to Sue, and we can, we can talk through these warrant articles.
So Article III is the one where we revised it to 2.5.
And by the way, it has to be the first warrant article. It's positioned because it's a bond.
Right. So that was the change that we made, I think, from the last time we talked about this. We agreed on the 1.7 million bond. We did not agree on what, whether we were doing a 10 or a 15-year. But that 36, 833 represents the first payment of a 10-year. And I think I gave you, did I get, did you get in your packets the outline of what that means if you did one or the other?
Yeah.
I mean, it's your decision whether you want to go 10 or 15, but I think you can see on there what the difference is. So you would have to decide if that's what you want to do. And then the rest of it, again, we went over this with our attorney and her suggestions and how we move things around to make the most sense that they could make out of this language. I don't know if you had a chance to read it.
No.
But we did include the 300 that we already have, and then another 500 through fundraising.
The question I have, I mean, I think this is clear. I think this is really getting there. Now, would there be confusion in the public if they said, "What if you don't raise the $500,000? Will the project still go forward?"
Yes.
It does.
And it does go forward, and so I don't know, you know, but it's not clear from here that it would go forward. It's kind of like a, kind of like an all or nothing. It almost feels like you got to get 250, $2,500,000 for the project to even start, you know?
No. To be complete, I mean, the envision of the $500,000 yet to be fundraised.
Yeah.
Assuming the vote is approved, 1.7. Assuming the vote is approved, 1.7 and the 300 that we, that has already been fundraised is $2 million.
Mm-hmm.
That gets the track done, the artificial turf done, it gets the...
Yeah.
Baseball and softball diamonds reconfigured, what I call the basic part of this project.
Yeah.
The additional fundraising that Fort and Todd and Cory will be striving for would be for stadium seating, lighting, new dugouts for the softball and baseball team. So clearly, the basic project, if we call it the basic project, gets done with the 1.7 and the 300,000.
Yeah.
It's the extras, if you will, that happen. So perhaps we could capture that, Tom, in the explanation below?
Yeah, I would think so, like, because otherwise I could think that, they think it's all dependent upon the fundraising, and it's really not.
Right.
So that, like, the basic project would, you know, would go forward.
Define just the way you have.
Even if this 500,000 is not raised, something like that in the explanation?
Yep.
Kenny?
You know, and I, I had a few suggestions for the explanation part, and I think that with the last sentence, we certainly could add, you know, where it talks about that 500,000, and add a sentence that without the 500,000, the, somehow that the, the project still will go forward, but these amenities might not be there.
Yeah.
I, but I wanted to point out, and the wording is something I've never seen before. We always talked about getting a three-fifths vote when voters vote in March. And this is saying also, to even appear, we're going to need to get a three-fifths vote at the annual meeting. So one, I wanted to make sure that's correct.
It's not correct.
Right.
Because it says it there, doesn't it?
Where does it say that?
Yeah, it does say that.
Oh, wow, good catch.
Catch, yeah.
That's a good one.
Kenny, you earned your money again.
Yeah.
You said you had some others, too?
I have some wordsmithing on the explanation. I don't know if we want to get into it at the table or not, but I, I wrote some things down.
I think it's our chance to get it the way we want it, right?
Yeah, now's the time to do it.
So I think we should add kind of that sentence towards the end, you know, after the 500,000, and just saying that if the 500,000 is not raised, the project will still go forward, but without certain amenities. I, I think we really need to emphasize with that artificial turf field, why we're really doing it, and it improves drainage, but I would add, will improve drainage, allowing for much greater utilization. Is that, to me, that's really a key of why we're going to do that? And just before that, so it's, um, one, two, three, it's on the fourth line, where we talk about the total cost of the project is 2.5 million. And maybe that wording's correct, or is that a place where you say the estimated total cost is 2.5? Because we really don't know for sure at this point what it will come in.
Yep. And will we in fact not know for sure? We will not put the, we will not get an estimated, we have an estimate.
We have an estimate.
We have an estimate. Okay. But we don't have a sealed bid.
It's pretty solid, too, based on...
Right, we don't do the bidding.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can't go out to bid until it gets voted on. Right, okay.
That's true. I mean, we could possibly put it out to bid before the vote to solidify it, but pretty confident with this number.
Okay. Uh, no?
Well, I wouldn't, like, pick, you know, to take the indecisiveness out, to say, let's, let's choose the 10-year. I think we should go 10, because the lifespan of the field turf was 10 years. It doesn't make sense to have to, in 10 years, to fix the field turf and still be paying on the, on the bond. So I, I think it'd just be wiser if we could come to a conclusion and pick, pick the years.
Mm-hmm.
Todd, do you have a sense of that?
That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to say the same.
You know, as a, as a voter, just going into the booth and reading this, is it, is there a reason why the total cost, you know, in the, in the article, the total cost gets put as the first line? And in the explanation, it's approving the bond of 1.7 million, which to me is much more clear. As a voter, you're going in actually to, to approve this bond as the first thing, and then the total cost is all kind of details following it. And I just wondered if there was a reason why that isn't switched around in the board.
Yeah, it's just the way, that's the way it has to be, unfortunately. You're right, you're right.
That is exactly the question we were debating today.
Okay. Denise?
Again, just a little wordsmithing. I, I think with the last sentence, if we said, um, an additional 500,000 will need, because we talk about the fundraising, you know, have already fundraised, so I would say and say raise to fund, I would say fundraise for bleachers, blah, blah. It's minor, but it just, it's consistent being like, oh, fundraising 300,000, we already did that. Another 500,000 is fundraising. Because otherwise, it's like, raised how? It's like, oh, you know, I think people understand that idea of fundraising. So that was all my suggestion.
Yeah, I was going to say you could consolidate almost the, say, the 1.7 million dollar bond and the $300,000 for Fort would be used for the construction of the track. And then, that, so those two sentences could be combined, and then just say, an additional 500,000 would be used then for this. So it just kind of cleans it up a little.
That's true, yeah. So...
So...
I think, I think, one way around the wordsmithing is what I'd love you guys to do, is take that back, that explanation back, with the idea that what we'd really like is it to be more clear to the voter that the project will go through for 2 million. And if, hearing this discussion, you can go back and try to do your magic, that would be great, because I think we could get really lost in rewriting sentences.
A question for you, though, Todd. It specifically says, says that Fort will be using the 300,000 for the track. Is that important to keep that? Because without suggestion, that takes away that distinction.
Well, the, the 300,000 is in an expendable trust fund specifically for the construction of an all-weather track.
Okay.
So it has to, that money has to be used towards the track.
So that, that makes it a little, that wording a little hard.
We could, I mean, I'm not going to wordsmith anymore.
Okay. Maria? I'm sorry, Maria?
Just a question of the whole thing. On 500,000 fundraising, to me, sounds daunting. Has any, I know that there are professionals out there that will look at the community and say, you can raise whatever number. Has that been done?
Yeah, when we started this, we actually had Paul Bamford, who does a lot of the fundraising for UNH, and Fergus Cullen, who's our cross-country coach, but is also a political fundraiser. They were involved in our creating the sort of the targets that we had, and we did feel that that was a feasible number, based on our goals.
Oh, rich people, Tom. Thank you.
So are we, to go back to the duration, are we all set with, is 10 agreeable to people? I think that would get it done, if, if we have, like, down the road, a middle school project, I think this would at least be near the end of it, depending when that happens. But I think if, if it stretches out 15 years, it would really stretch out, let's stretch out into...
Do you want to do that as a motion, Tom, and lock it?
Um, I think we should, to, because I think that's important. Al?
I'd like to make a motion that we have the length of the bond for the athletic facilities 10 years.
Moved by Al, seconded by Denise. Are there questions about that? Hearing done, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, motion passes. Okay. Does that give, is there any other, I just have one, I know, this is words, this is tinkering, but I think instead of the construction of athletic fields and tracks, it's just one track we're doing, right?
You're right.
Okay.
Yeah, it should not be plural.
Okay.
I think we've got enough so that we can go ahead.
Yeah, start.
That's what, at a writing workshop, that's the way it always does. I think I got it.
And then I just have one other item. Notice on Article VII, we don't have any numbers in there. Are we okay to go with the budget that we left with at the last time we discussed our budget?
No. And that also should be in the form of a motion, so we can lock it into the warrant.
I don't have to vote on that one tonight.
We don't have to. We can, we have, we can do it in the next meeting.
But I would...
And we'll insert the numbers, and then you can see it.
Yes, I would be better to, yeah.
Yeah. Are we going to talk about Article VI? What?
I had a question on Article VI.
Okay, Maria, want to ask your question?
Well, it says furthermore, more, kind of in the middle there, to raise and appropriate the sum of 200,000. And then, it goes on to say, it will be funded from the year-end undesigned fund balance. So why do we raise and appropriate $2,000, 200, $200,000?
Good question.
If that's going to come out of unappropriated funds?
I'll check the language, but I think, again, it's very confusing if that's the way it has to be, but...
We'll validate.
We'll validate that.
Sometimes we call, and I just laugh, because otherwise you'd cry.
I wonder whether raise and appropriate is like a legal term or something, you know? Denise?
If it does have to be worded that way, could we potentially have a little explanation underneath to explain that that is, because that's coming from...
The LGC.
The, yeah, exactly. So we could explain that that's where that money's coming from.
Glad to do that.
Or rather, that it does not increase the budget.
Right.
Yep.
We'll take a shot at that as well.
So the fund, the amount here is 200,000. The LGC money that came to our district is 400,000, so it's a sense of taking half of that.
Exactly.
Up to.
Up to half of that. And then, going back to our previous discussion, perhaps using some of that to pay for the buyouts.
Exactly.
So that's kind of how that's being split?
Unless you want to adjust that number, I just...
Okay, but I think that gives a sense, because I was wondering why the two, why not, why, you know, how, the rationale for the 200,000.
Remember, every time that Sue touches anything, she goes to the conservative side. So you want to, if you overstate that, then you're going to be frustrating people because they're going to be expecting 400,000 when the result is, if you use that fund to help support the early trial incentives, there isn't 400,000.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Is there any reason why you picked 200,000? I mean, that's about, what, half a percent?
Yeah, I just, I just feel comfortable with that number, just because, you know, you're only going to be into March, you don't know what could happen that you might need to use some more, so. I mean, that still gives you the flexibility that if at the end of the year, something happens, you only put in 100, because it says up to, you know?
Yeah.
Committed to 200, but you only put in 100, because, you know, that just happens to be what you have.
Mm-hmm.
It's a decision you can make later.
Is that an argument for saying up to 400? I mean, why?
Um, I think, again, Ed, I think it's the messaging you're putting out there, because if you put a larger number out there, then people expect you're going to hit that number.
Yeah.
I think if you put the number that you think you're going to hit, then people don't get frustrated by the fact that it was half of that. I think it's just the conversation you're having with the public and being realistic.
And remember, I, I think we like to have, and we always do when we budget, fund balance that offsets the tax rate, too, that offsets, that's part of your revenue, so trying to keep all of those things in mind. Want to be able to have that flexibility.
Just a question, this is, in terms of this, what kind of account this is? Would the board have real discretion determining when, when to use it? Say, say the health insurance comes in at 5%, we want to moderate that. I mean, is there any num, you know, we could, we could, we'd have full discretion in terms of when we would decide we need to do that.
Yes.
We wouldn't have to go to anybody else to...
Correct. You're the trustees of the account.
Okay. And the distinction between that and the kind of a fund that we created a couple of years ago is, that was more of a catastrophic fund, that we would have to go to the state and say, we've had this, whatever.
You'd have to ask the commissioner first, and she gives you a green light, then you would have the authority to.
Okay. And, and that would be for, just what kinds of things would that be used for? Because I think we'll need to explain, whoever presents this article will need to explain why this is different than that one. You know, why are you setting up a second one?
Right.
Okay?
Sure, so examples of the other one might be catastrophic failure of the boilers at the high school. You know, that's going to cost a couple hundred thousand dollars that we didn't budget.
Mm-hmm.
God forbid, a roof collapse, you know, through ice like today. If we had an incessant season where ice and Jim Rizicky was doing a great job trying to get it off the buildings, but it got ahead of the staff and, you know, the failure there. I think you could make an argument for anything being an emergency as this body defines it, and then approaching the commissioner and saying, we consider this an emergency. Say the, say the health insurance went up 20%, we put this, and the voters support the 200,000 going aside, but the cost to the district of a 20% increase would be well over a million dollars. You could then probably petition, that this is where the subjectivity comes in.
Yeah, yeah.
The commissioner to say, we're in a difficult spot, and we want to release that money because we consider this an emergency as a board. I suspect that a commissioner would be receptive to the collective will of a local school board in terms of defining that emergency. On the other hand, if we got silly and said, it's because we want to buy computers, or because we wanted to buy more math materials, I don't think there would be any receptivity in Concord for that. So I think defining a crisis at the moment is situational. I think some things would be very obvious, other things may be less obvious as the situation you find yourself in. Real example that happened to me in Maine was, we pre-bought our oil and prepaid it. We had done it in the district for 25 years, the company failed, and the district was holding a million-dollar loss. That would be a crisis of some magnitude. And so, those funds could be then petitioned for the state to say, look, this is a situation where it's our money, would you let us release it so we don't have to go to the taxpayers and have a special meeting?
Would a lawsuit, God forbid, I mean, if you had a settlement or something like that, you were unexpected with that?
Yeah, I think, you know, at that point, that's the discussion this body has, and says, you know, we have to make this payment, we, we don't want to go to the taxpayers. This fund is sitting there for an emergency, nobody anticipated that result. Let's ask the commissioner if we can release funds to support that.
Good, thank you.
It's very undefined. You can see my answer kind of glides over many hypotheticals, because really, there hasn't been a situation yet where it's been tested. Because those systems that have created it at the same time we did, knock on wood, haven't had the crisis yet that they, that we're aware of, that they would have petitioned the commissioner for a release of those funds. Well, and this, like, when you say it's a benefits thing, so that by its nature, I assume this 200,000 we're setting aside, when it's benefits, it's either going to be like, the things that keep hitting us, which is the increase in our contribution to the retirement system or the healthcare. So this is not, you know, again, benefits, those are benefits. The other things are just... Yeah, and I also would add, Al, in that, in that nature, that, you know, this is our first dip in this water in terms of trying to set aside money to protect the taxpayer, and that 200,000 is pretty, pretty small in relation to our $38 million budget. Over time, we would do what the towns do and continue to try to contribute to that fund, so that it would become a fund that would be substantial enough to compensate in terms of, you know, state shifting is a good example. Two years ago, that was $600,000 that was passed on to the local taxpayer in one year with no preparation to do so, just boom, there it was. So, you know, our municipal partners all have the ability to manage their funds in this way, and this, this is a good finance tool for the board to have to be able to face unforeseen calamities, unforeseen expenses, and, and deal with them without robbing Peter to pay Paul. And by that, I mean, you don't freeze the budget, and the kids don't get the workbooks they need in first grade, because we're facing a $600,000 shift from the state to the locals. they need in first grade, because we're facing a $600,000 shift from the state to the locals. You don't stop buying the math materials at the high school, or the shop materials at the high school, or the, the things that we need to operate with our students, because we run into a financial crisis not of our making. So that's really what you're trying to do, is create a self-insurance, if you will.
Other questions about this warrant?
Yeah, just to, and I won't, if, if, in the future budget, more, there's money to put into this fund, it won't need to come back as a warrant article. That's just something that can be...
It does.
It does.
Every, yeah, the voters, different than municipal government. School government has to go and ask the voters every single time we try to appropriate a few. So the voters always see this every time we put something in it.
So I'm wondering, as a timeline, whether for the 17th meeting, I guess I'd like your advice on this. Would, when will we be voting on the warrant articles? Like, we've seen drafts, drafts, drafts. What, what will be a good target? Because it needs to be ready for a January meeting, right? So it'd have to be the next meeting or the meeting after. I would think that we have to really give our final approval.
Final, what you're going to present?
And it can go right to the first meeting in January, you know, for comfort. You know, if the board is comfortable with, you know, three out of the seven articles, or how many there are, then get those off the table, you know? If number three, we finesse enough, everybody's comfortable with it, lock it, and move on to Article Six. You know, because you don't have to do them all at once. I mean, if you have, you're ready, then let's take those off the table, go to the next ones and get those done. We really, we can be done in the first meeting of January. There's no immediate pressure, other than for you to provide Sue and I the information you want so we can continually refine these to the point that collectively you're comfortable.
I have one more. I'm jumping to Article Seven again, because you said, you know, we do it, everybody wants the numbers in there. But we do it, can you also have, like, all that collective yellow sheet thing? Just what we added on, all those positions?
Sure.
Just because we never really...
Right, the whole thing.
We never really said, yes, we want to do that. Yeah, yeah. And then there was stuff added in, like the...
Attend for a couple of things we missed.
Yeah, there was just a couple. And so we've never really said, yes, we want all these things. I think we, when we locked down Article Seven, we should say, yes, we want all these things, or no, we don't, whatever the case might be.
Yeah, I agree.
We'll have that for you as well.
Kenny, did you have something?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, we could...
Marie.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Just a question. If we add up all these things, add it to the budget, how much more are we spending?
Did I put that on your sheet that I gave you, the backup sheet?
I think...
Three point one.
Was it on that? Do you have that?
Let's, let's make sure we have that for you.
Yeah, I can give it to you again. But I thought that I had them all individually listed. And the tax impact on each one.
It's just going to move forward.
What if we got them as close to final, our next meeting? And then if we're ready to vote on them, fine, we can, you know, vote on them. If we still have something that we were unsatisfied with, then we would still have the first meeting in January, rather than to put up two weeks, two meetings. I think that would make sense. Would that be reasonable? Okay.
Agreed.
Okay. Okay.
And just a reminder that if you have a bond, you really need to have two bond, two public hearings. So the way we're going to do it is, we're going to have them both on the same night. So you'd actually have one adjourned and then have the other.
Okay.
So you understand that. That's the recommendation from our attorney.
Okay.
So you need to have a separate bond hearing and a separate hearing on your other.
Okay.
So you're not wondering about that.
So would that be in January?
It's, it's the same night as your other hearing, but you really have to have them separate.
Okay.
So we...
So the way that works is, which one would we do first?
Bond hearing.
We would do the bond. So we would open it up, it would be just to discuss the bond, close that, and then do.
So what we would do is, I'd open it, then I'd ask Todd and Cory to do an abridged version of the presentation that you saw, Denise. And then open it up to questions. Go from there.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Sue.
Makes sense? Thank you.
I was wondering whether we should move these, because people are here for those. Do you think we should move those up? In terms of the order, I'm wondering if people would be agreeable to have, since people are here to present on the Mastway parking lot drainage, and Lisa Hough is here to speak about the bus lease, to take those two next, and then come to the mini-retirement incentive update and approval. Would that be agreeable to people? To respect, to respect their time?
Can we do the bus lease first? That should be relatively short.
Okay, let's do the bus lease first and then do the... Okay, Lisa?
So Sue, do you want to join Lisa at the podium? So just to kind of set the stage once again. About two months ago, Lisa came to me and Sue and was very concerned about the current condition of the current fleet. The very first day we transported students, one of our buses lost their brakes. It wasn't a week later that we lost an engine and so forth. Largely, what, in spite of all the great preventative maintenance that we do, the issue is that we had about four school years where no buses were purchased. And so that creates a vacuum in terms of your capital plan in terms of, of updating your buses. So I asked Sue and Lisa to look at the possibility of leasing three buses over and above the buses we have already purchased this year to try to fill that gap. So I'll let Lisa and Sue talk about what they discovered in our recommendation.
So we looked at the savings that we were getting from the newer buses that we have on our maintenance line. We're not putting as many repairs into, big repairs into the buses, because they're newer. And we are finding that we had a little leftover in there, and we could use that by putting out... We put out an RFP for three different companies to send us information on possibilities of leasing. And we took that information and found that we could make payments annually out of that fund.
Repair fund.
Repair fund. So we came up with, if we were to release three buses for five years at $50,986 a year, that would get us those three new buses in January, using the repair money that we currently have in the budget, give us those three new buses. Then we'd be buying three new in the spring, or for the next budget year. So that would give us six vehicles.
Is there, I mean, like, when you lease a car, there's like a mileage thing on there. Is there one on a bus? Is it on a...
No.
I mean, I don't think there's one bus lease.
No, these are leased to own. There were two different options they threw at us. One was leasing with a balloon payment at the end. We pay that balloon payment and it's ours. And the other option was just leasing, taking the total amount and dividing it over how many years you want to lease it and make those payments. And I think that's the wiser of the two. The balloon payment looked pretty scary when you started adding up two to three buses, so...
Yeah. You know, to be, you know, to be totally transparent, since we love that word. Leasing is not my first choice in terms of purchasing large equipment like buses. But I think that we're in that point in time where we have to recognize that we are in what I would consider a safety emergency situation in relation to the buses. The five-year lease is going to cost the district $11,000. $11,000 more than we would normally when we buy them outright. But we don't have the capacity to buy three $85,000 buses in this bu, in this budget. So Lisa and Sue worked very aggressively to capture the cost of the lease within our current maintenance budget. Clearly, if we buy three new buses, and they could be here by January if the board approves this tonight, then the, the outlay that we have on maintenance, engines, transmissions, and so forth, would, would be gone. So it's not the ideal way of purchasing buses, but in this particular situation, I think it's prudent that we do it.
Does that, does that then put us, okay, so if we lease these, then going forward, does that then put us on track for like a regular replacement, so that we're not behind the eight ball?
Um, not quite.
Not quite, yeah.
Not quite, but it will be in a better place.
Yeah, not quite on track.
Our plan, Al, if you remember, is three buses a year. And it's only been three school years that we've, or four, Sue.
Yeah.
Four school years that we've been sticking to that plan. You know, you're trying to compensate for a hole in the capital improvement, one-time hole, but the hole was bigger than one time, it was four times. So it's, it's a much better place for us to be. At the same time, you know, we, we really aren't compensating for the, that absence of time of purchasing buses.
Denise?
So I'm, I'm a little confused. So there's three, I see the three different bits here. And so are you, which, and what was the figure that you just gave in terms of what it would cost? I was trying to compare what you said to one of these figures down here, and it didn't seem to match anything. So I was confused.
It's the international.
It's the international, which is...
Oh, it's at the last one, okay.
$16,995, plus three.
Okay, that's what you were looking at, okay.
So are there other questions we can answer to help the board?
So it's, so you're, you're choosing the five-year lease over the three. And just, and I think you alluded to it, so repairs on a leased bus? I see that there's some warranty kind of things. So will we be free of maintenance on these buses?
Nomwear and tear is ours, you know, oils and tires. But you're talking about engines and transmissions, those would be underworn.
Okay.
Just like any of the new buses that we get, if we were to purchase them outright.
And what kind of, this is silly, what kind of mileage does a bus do in a year?
In a year? Oh, about 60,000?
I'm sorry?
50, 60,000 miles.
So will we go over, so the warranty says five-year, 100,000 mile. So will we get off that warranty then, in the...
Two years.
With, you know, in a year and a half or so?
You know, there was one year that we had a 10-year warranty on the bus. We could check into those.
Do they have like a, yeah, cars have like extended warranty. Do they have that with a bus?
It's a chassis and the engine.
Yep. That's a standard warranty on the buses. It seemed to be across the board.
And that's the same if we buy them?
Yeah.
They will have that same cost?
Yeah. It's, it's, that does go right back to Al's question about if you lease a car, same thing happens. When you get a certain mileage guarantee, and the mileage guarantee's over, you're, you're in for the maintenance.
So the motion would be to lease three buses for five years from international at $16,995.51 per, per year, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, is that, that's what you're, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay. Are we ready to?
Well, I have a question.
Okay, Marie, go ahead.
Was this bid?
Yes.
Okay.
Denise?
So, and I'm still trying to, so it says fixed interest rate. No, yes, no, no for the international. So I guess I'm confused by that, with the interest rate, because it's, I'm looking at the bottom where it says fixed interest rate, and then it says...
Yeah, it was W.C. Cressy who gave us the fixed interest rate. And the fixed interest rate was a little bit higher than the variable.
So, but does that mean that this lease amount could go up, then? I guess I'm, I'm still trying to understand.
I'm assuming the interest rate might, could go up, yes.
And then so would be higher, okay. I wouldn't put the amount in there, because this is, this could change when we actually go out and do the lease and draw up all the leasing papers. If you just approve us to go forward with it, we'll bring back the actual lease and the actual amount to you. Because that's, right now, we're kind of in the preliminary. And until we get the actual, yes, you can go ahead with it, then we'll get them to draw up papers and do the official.
So this is, so a motion to approve you going ahead?
With a lease.
Then to come, okay. Would you come back to us, or would this?
Yes.
Okay.
And we'll run it through our attorneys and everything, too. Final approval.
So this is not final? This is just to go forward, to come back to us with something that's final? Is that right? Okay, does that make sense?
Seems pretty final.
Yeah, that's true, too.
Well, it is pretty final, but...
Thanks, Emily.
Yeah, so it seems, I mean, it seems like this is...
Once you give a green light.
Right, then we're, we're just, you know, signing off. Tell me, so we're looking at international for how many years?
Five.
Three buses.
Okay.
Two buses.
So I'll just go back to that answer, just to clarify. I, I agree with Sarah's interpretation of this seems pretty final. Because when you approve it, then basically you're saying to us, enter into the lease. The reason it comes back to you is it's required to by statute, because it's a lease. So you, when you give a green light tonight, it is the green light. I, I think it got a little muddy there for a second. I just wanted to clarify.
I just didn't want you to commit to an amount, because that amount might fluctuate.
Okay, got it.
Okay. And then Denise?
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I do, but, oh, are you going to make a...
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I, so, because they all do, the three look pretty similar. So how is it that you decided on international?
The bottom line was that our warranty site for all the buses, one is in Kennebunkport, one is in Connecticut, and one is in Barrington. And the international is right in Barrington.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Al?
I'd like to make a motion to go forward with a lease program for three buses.
Okay. For, for five years?
For five years.
Okay. Okay, moved by Al. Denise?
Mm-hmm.
Seconded by Denise?
Mm-hmm.
Further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. The Mastway parking lot drainage solution, with the emphasis on solution?
How exciting.
Good evening, board.
You're really...
This is, this is a historic moment.
Apparently so. Board, thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening. Thank you, Dr. Morris. I also want to introduce and thank Howie Hoff from the Lee Congregational Church, which is here, showing his support for the project. It was actually very key that the Lee Church would be involved with us in this. Because by the picture, you can see that the majority of it, if not all, is on their property. Kind of want to back up a little bit and, and first say that when Sue and I started talking about this about a year ago, we really wanted to come to the board showing you multiple different options. But unfortunately, just given how things went and the nature of Mastway, we were limited on doing that, just because of the, the test pit results and just the way that our, our property is configured over there. We had really no other option and way, a place to go, because we knew that we had church property on the left of us. We had a state route right in front of us with nowhere to go. And we had a big rock line out back, so that really limited the amount of different designs or options that we could present to you tonight, so... Basically, from the, from the design, I know this is probably your guys' first peek at this. So what this is, is the, the very hard line to the left of the picture, hugging the, the side of the property, that goes on an angle, is, is actually our boundary line. So once that was established, we were able to really see not only where, where our property line was, but really gave us the direction on where to go. Our first impression and first mode to remediate this was just to get the water away. And we were thinking, well, it's on our property, let's just put it, push it way back into the woods, underneath the power lines, have a retention pond, just give it, just get it out of there. But we're very limited on that as a result of the test digs. So just walking through with a couple members of the community, we reached out to, which was the Durham Town Engineer at the time, and was very instrumental in building the rain garden here at the high school and solving this issue. We brought it to his attention, just for some, hey, what did you do? What do you think? And we both looked over to the left and seen this larger level cleared, or wooded area, which happened to be the property of the church, and kind of gave us some direction about maybe interfacing with them and, and thinking of a solution on that property. So kind of some of the groundwork in this. So we, and I think I provided a little bit of a timeline of everything that we've kind of been through over the course of the year. We really just started reaching out to the, to the Lee Church, just to not only establish that relationship, but ask for permission to see if we can do several test digs on their property along with ours. The, the previous discussion about this back in 2011 with the previous facilities director and other administration was, there was some test digs performed on our property only and in the parking lot. And I believe that the reason why that particular project or nothing really came of light of that, because it was, I think, around the tune of $200,000. And it had to do with a porous pavement option, which was removing all of the, the pavement in the parking lot as it is now, and basically raising it up, I believe, almost a foot, filling it with material, so the water would trap underneath the parking lot itself. But there's a series of maintenance issues. That was kind of a, somewhat of a newer trend at the time, and maybe not really proven. So, and the price tag was obviously scary. So our whole goal was to try to get something a lot more affordable than that. So our whole goal was to try to get something a lot more affordable than that, and and besides getting the water away, when people started mentioning rain garden, it really started to spark more interest just because of the success here at the high school. It not only solved the issue, but really gave it a segue into some educational benefit as well, so. With the blessing of the church and the meetings that we had, we're right now at the point of having our engineer assist us in a easement plan or easement agreement between both parties to actually perform this work. And we're, we, we could still tweak the design, not tweak the design, I should say. Our main goal is, and the only place that we could put the rain garden is in that same spot that you see it now. As far as the other things around that, like the additional parking spaces right on 155, is still up for review, debate, and other options are being considered for that. I know I kind of jumped around a little bit, but I'm, I'm more than welcome to take any questions that you may have or any comments or questions.
Go ahead, Denise?
Yes.
Well, so what are we talking dollars? Because I didn't get that in, in all, any of this stuff. I was like, okay, so how much is this going, you know?
Right. We asked that question as well. If we paid a contractor from soup to nuts, from start to finish, just on the rain garden itself, inclusive of the paving right along 155, he gave us, us an estimate of $90,000. The good thing about this is that we have an opportunity to save quite a bit of money, just using local resources. And like, for instance, the fill that would be taken out, we'd be paying all that hauling. That would be a large part, almost like $40,000 worth of the project, just removing almost 1,000 yards of fill in that grassy area just out of the site. Just in some talks, the churches agreed to maybe clear an area right on the edge of their parking lot just for a holding place until we can find either another contractor, some member of the community. We even talked about if the, the ball fields and athletic fields go through at the high school, that that would be, we would essentially maybe sell that fill into the project for as a free. You know, just kind of cost savings. I mean, that's a fairly large amount of money that we could save. And, and plus just the community aspect, reaching out to other members of the community who might want some clean fill for whatever project they have going on. And also the materials going in too. It's, we have opportunities to use a lot of local vendors, a lot of local excavation companies or so. I hope, another question or another point I wanted to make around the finances, probably wondering how would we pay for all this since when I came to you guys a couple months ago presenting the CIP, I only put $70,000 in that seven, in that line for this project. As it stands right now in this current budget year, there was $35,000 earmarked for parking lot improvements at Massway. Our original goal was to extend paving as we did last year in the back of the playground. We decided to put that project on hold for a little bit, that continuing of that resurfacing, and use that for, to possibly begin this project a little bit earlier, meaning clearing trees in the fall, in the, in the winter here, collecting bids for, and maybe put some of that money towards materials and fill and other work associated with this. So we can possibly maybe even break around before the next budget year. So we, even though, yeah, 90 is what our contractor said, we, we are very hopeful we can be below that. But I, I don't want to use the term play with, but we have almost $100,000 to use towards this project.
And you would budget the way, you would budget as if you were contracting all this out because to do less means you're trying, depending on uncertain resources.
Absolutely.
So it's all nice that, you know, maybe we can give it to the athletic field, maybe there are local resources. Those are all maybes, but to do the project, we need a budget for it.
Absolutely.
I just have a, kind of a dumb question, like, how does this? How do you get the water in there? Just the logic, how's this, how does this work? I mean, in a layman's language.
Yeah, it's, well, interestingly, just, just from the topography studies, we do have a low spot where the, obviously where the water pools out right now, that's actually a catch basin buried underground that obviously is filled with silt or can't hold the amount of water to naturally leach through the earth. So a way to get that water channeled over there is to fill up that catch basin, raise the grade a little bit, repave that area to direct all the water towards.
So it's like pitched?
Absolutely. And there's, unlike closer review of the plan that you guys have, you'll be able to see the elevations and how our engineers pitched it purposely towards that.
And we have used rain gardens in the past as a solution.
Absolutely.
Right here on this property.
Speaking financially too, thank, thank you to Maggie Morrison of our Green Team. She reached out to Peter Wellenberger of the Grape Aids-Stewarts Foundation, and he has offered to offer us a $5,000 grant towards plants or perennials and actually labor to even plant those inside the rain garden.
So just to follow up, so the pitch is to direct the water towards the rain garden, is that right?
Yes, absolutely.
Now, what enables the rain garden to accommodate all that water?
What enables the?
Well, I mean, you have, you're directing the water that was filling up in this, like, like Massway into the, into this rain garden, okay? So, so how does, what, you know, so how does that, how is all that water accommodated in the rain garden? Is it just?
Well, at the bottom of the rain garden is actually two catch basins that are fairly shallow, and there's a perforated pipe running between them. Now, water just naturally empties into them. And the reason why those perforated pipes underneath is, is actually for freezing. You don't want water just to collect in a pool and then freeze there, and then more water or snow get added to it, and then possibly overflow, but that perforated pipe under grade allows that to not freeze and, and hold and trap more water in.
Okay.
You're also going from a porous to a non-porous surface.
Correct.
Yeah. Sarah?
Hi.
I got my pen.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a few questions first. And then I'll go with concerns. So my first question is, looking, and I think I know the answer, but just need to hear it. Looking at the plans?
Yes.
It looks like there are certain sections that will be repaved.
Yes.
But it will not be a complete repaving of the parking lot.
No.
Okay.
There's not.
That's one question. Second. Plans for, other than the rain garden, the plants and things that are going in the rain garden itself? Plans for landscaping and vegetation? Are there any? Like, in that?
You mean like a landscape design for what plans are gonna go where?
Right, and I, I use landscape design really loosely, like, it could be, you know, eight shrubs for the same style. Okay, but so that's, so the thought right now is it's gonna be grass in that front strip? If that, if the, if that strip gets paved with the parking spots?
Right in front, right on 155?
Right, so it would be just grass there, and then there would be the... And would all of the trees come down between the school and the church?
Actually, no, all the trees would come down between our parking lot and the power lines.
Okay, but then from the church to the preschool?
Right, from the church to the power lines would still be, will still be wooded.
Okay. A little full disclosure here, I'm married to a civil engineer who does this stuff daily. So I was able to look at these plans with a little more oomph. So in the data that was shared with us, and the test pit data in particular, I did not see, he did not see, we did not see, a seasonal high water table reading for that test pit. And I'm wondering if that piece of data was determined? And if that piece of data was used in the design of, used and considered in the design of this plan? In the design of that rain garden?
Okay.
In particular?
Sarah, I'm gonna have to get back to you on that. I really want to bounce that across the engineer that we're using.
Excellent. And then my last question is, is this plan being presented to the Lee Planning Board?
Yes, actually, once we had the easement in place?
Yeah.
Howie and myself, we're gonna go and, and present this to the Lee Planning Board.
Okay.
We are within setbacks.
Absolutely.
Which we already have been to the Lee, the person at the Lee Planning Board to see if we were okay even with this, this design. They said okay.
Yeah.
But as a courtesy, we're gonna present it to the Lee community.
Okay, because, yeah, it is a very, obviously, Massway is like, is right there.
Right.
That, you're in downtown Lee.
Right.
There's no, nothing.
Downtown Lee.
So, yeah, really, that is our booming metropolis. So I, I'm done with my questions.
Okay.
Do you have questions before I go with my concerns?
Denise?
I just.
No, that's okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, Kelly, then Denise.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Hoff and the Lee Congregational Church for being such cooperative and good neighbors. You know, I, I don't know the technical aspects here, but without their cooperation, I think this wouldn't have been feasible, and I think we really appreciate that.
Denise, you had a question?
Yes, so, so where, I understand that there's money in this year's budget to go towards this, but I guess I'm confused about, are we, is this additional money for next year's budget? Is it within next year's budget?
It's in, it's in the proposed budget that you've received.
Yes.
Okay, so it's already included in this?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah?
Just, I wanted to, you mentioned something about the new parking places? The 11 parking places came up at the sustainability meeting last night about whether those were sustainable parking places or just additional, extra, bring your extra cars and park at Massway parking places?
Well, I think when we really started looking at this, we just, every time we were over there looking at the space, we seen cars parked up on the grass, and we thought, that's really ugly. It'd be really nice to get some kind of order through here. And that, we wanted that included in the design right from the beginning because we thought it was going to be needed with the amount of traffic that's in there. But again, I've heard the same buzz from members of the Sustainability Club, our team and others, saying, that's really ugly. And, you know, I, I agree, and it doesn't mean that we, we put it in as a consideration to this design, but still, we're, we are looking at other options. And one of those was, you know, I think that there's a couple parking spaces where the amount of pooling is considered now that just is, is freezing up, that people aren't parking there because of a, a safety issue. So we might be able to kind of break even, so to speak, if we don't do it, but.
I would add, Jim, that if you go to Massway any point in the day, that parking lot is full, full, full.
Yeah.
You're gonna pick up maybe four slots
Right.
in the back of the parking lot when Lake Massway dries up, and you're still gonna have people parking on the lawn. So, you know, the ugliness part of it is, people are parking on the lawn anyway. So, you know, it does make a certain amount of sense to capture those parking spaces. Parking is, I mean, tar is not pretty, there's no question about it, but neither is muddy, rutted lawn.
Right.
And, you know, it's, the parking at both the elementary schools is tragically inept. And this helps a little bit at Massway, and I think, I think if you would present this plan to the Sustainability Committee, they'd understand, and if they were there during the school day, they'd understand. It is a crowded parking situation in a school day.
It is our goal in facilities to work on some beautification projects around the district anyway, and we still have some space over there to put some trees, shrubs, even a couple beds right in front of that to make it a little bit more attractive. Yeah.
Well, I think the, it was, you know, if, if parking is needed, that's, that's a big issue. I think it was for the sustainability, like, and it was more than just aesthetics, it was whether these were necessary, necessary for the, for the parking lot.
Every time I've been there personally, I, I feel it's necessary because I see people parking over there, but who knows, maybe all day K, that might, that might contribute to parents pick up and drop off, park there, I don't know.
There was another question, another comment came up at the Sustainability Committee, which was that there's a sawmill nearby, and there may be some, something, some use for the trees that got cut down there with the local sawmill.
I just heard that. That is so cool. I love to cash in on that and, and research that. And again, we really want to try to make this really a community focal point. I think it's fantastic, not only for our children, but for, for the community itself. So we're gonna be, our first priority is gonna be reaching out to local vendors and people that can help us out with this project as well.
Sarah, you had some concerns?
Yeah, no, these are, these are my, my concerns. It is an enge, I mean, I've lived in the community for five years. I went to Lee Church. I, we've been at Massway for, what, six years now? It is an engineering feat. I mean, that has stumped engineers. It is incredibly flat pitch space. So thank you for looking at it. Thank you, Lee Church. I know you've been dealing with it as well for your parishioners. Funk, I, I'm worried on two fronts, function and aesthetics, okay? Function, I really worry that without that seasonal high water table data. Okay, we are unsure of the, we cannot say with confidence that that is going to work.
Right.
Okay, you guys are recommending we dig down seven feet if we looked at the, if I looked at it right, I mean, so, so anyway, that piece of data, I think, is critical to knowing whether this project is gonna work. We had those catch basins put in as a sort of stopgap a few years ago with the hope that they would help remediate this, and they did not. And again, they filled up with silt. What is saying that this one rain garden? I mean, it is gonna get filled with silt, that's just, as my husband said to me, Sarah, dirt moves. It just moves. So, you know, with, with the idea of one rain garden, maybe you, I mean, I'm sure, again, I don't want to micromanage the engineering of this bit. My concern is that it doesn't work, that what if it doesn't work? And we're sort of putting, with one rain garden, we're putting all of our eggs in one basket. If that rain garden fails, we're gonna have to dredge it, et cetera. Second, not all drainage areas are being addressed in that plan. We've still got drainage at the entrance to the parking lot that's not addressed. We have drainage at the entrance of the bus ring and the exit of the bus ring that aren't being addressed by that plan.
Not specifically by this plan, and I'm, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off.
No, no, no.
We do realize that, and we have our engineer currently working on the drainage pooling at the, at the parking lot entrance.
Okay.
On both sides.
Because that one's obviously even worse than the ones at the bus entrances because buses are vacant.
And, you know, we may have a possibility of doing a smaller rain garden towards the bus entrance as well. I've been trying to head over there every time we get a significant amount of drain because I think that's a really good indicator. Where is it pooling? Where is it coming from?
Well, Leah, tell them to take some pictures if you need some.
Okay.
Because, well, you know, again, it's like, it's, you know, it's not, it's, this is not at all saying that, that the engineer is not doing quality work. It's that if you see this place, if you go there for holiday concerts and art shows, and, you know, you see it in every single situation, it's more than just a test pit, which is all that an engineer who has, you know, who, who doesn't live it, has the, the chance to do. That's the best you can do. But, so, so that's, that would be great if those can be considered. Aesthetics is my other area. We've all agreed that Massway needs a little curb appeal. The district has done some phenomenal work this year with the painting, with, you know, so many things. And I worry that this plan, I mean, it made me feel better just to hear you say that the complete buffer of trees between the school and the church property isn't gonna be gone. That at least the church piece will retain it, because that would be a big visual difference. The plan also, and again, you're saying that this, you guys are still thinking about this, and I do encourage you to do that. Those spaces on the front, you know, five years ago, I'd say, we had trees there. They were pines, and no one parked on that, no one parked there. And our population's decreasing at the school, so, you know, are people parking there because they absolutely need to or because it's closer to the school entrance? And I just, by reducing it, by putting those spaces there, we can't get a visual barrier for Massway, and I just think aesthetically, that's a shame, because I, I think it would be nice if we could spruce it up somehow, you know, add a tree or two. Tovin said he donated a tree.
So your question is about aesthetics from 155 looking towards the parking lot?
Yeah.
Or the rain garden side?
No, 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 I, I mean, I think the rain garden, you know, we all know that could potentially be a maintenance headache, but could also, you know, I think with care, it'll be fantastic. And I, I, as I said, I'm very happy with the fact that there will still be the trees between the rain garden and the, the church property. My fear was that it was gonna have to be completely clear cut, and then the rain garden was gonna go in the middle, which would be very nice, it would just be a very different look. And it, and it makes me happy to hear that you're gonna take it to the Lee Planning Board because, again, I just think it's for the community, because that school is so prominent, I mean, it's like, it's so there. I mean, it's like, it's so there, that it really would be nice, just that the community be, be able to see it, speak to it. And that would be great.
That's really a good idea, Sarah. And the other piece is actually related to that. When Sue and I were talking about going out to the three towns I could do during budget season, we were gonna have Todd and Cory come and do a mini presentation on the athletic fields. We actually, when we go to Lee, could have Jim come with us and do a mini presentation on this, and then they get the full picture of what this budget is about.
And they have, you know, the lead planning board, they, they have people who really are knowledgeable whose job it is to sort of pick this stuff apart. You know, and I think another set of eyes is gonna be great, especially for that one.
Sure. We're very much into that. As far as the community relations piece, what you said is exactly what myself, Sue, Green Team, people of the school district, and especially the Lee Church really want to put out to the Lee community. So, couldn't have said it better. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, the mini retirement incentive update in approval. So we have eight teachers who've asked for, to be part of this program.
Thanks, Tom. We, when we, when I first approached the board with the mini and retirement incentive, in my consultations with the Teachers Guild, we really thought three was, you know, kind of a generous number. Because the Guild itself was getting no feedback from their membership that there were many people who were thinking about retiring. And as you can see, we exceeded the three by a factor of five. We have eight teachers who would like to participate in the retirement incentive. I would echo Sue's concern that, first of all, I would support all of these retirements to you. Second concern I would have is, we would not be able to support all eight within this budget. But Sue and I have consulted, and we think we could handle six within this budget and carry the cost of the incentive for two of them into July 1st. So, having said that, I would also say, because I know Denise will say it anyway, and these are all very senior people who have invested their careers here in the school system. And you look down through the names, and many of them are, you know, very prominent members of our faculty. Having said that, they're also at the point in their careers where they can retire. And one of the downsides of the retirement in New Hampshire is there is no bridge to health insurance. So the reason the incentive becomes attractive is it provides senior faculty the ability to cover the cost of their insurance to the point of when Medicare takes over and so forth. So I think that the fact that we positioned ourselves in a way that said, said that we really were gonna try to limit this, created a greater interest on staff than we anticipated. The three names, the first three names came in within the first two hours of the announcement. So there were people, those three, you could argue, would maybe have retired anyway, but they didn't say they were going to. And so, you know, I think we're at a place where this benefits the system, and it also benefits the individuals, and that is the definition of a retirement incentive, to both the employer and the individual benefit. The answer to that would be, I think, yes, based on our past experience with this. And I would recommend that the board consider authorizing all eight retirees. I'm glad to answer questions.
Questions? Kenny, Denise?
So, when we were originally presented with a number, you thought three was the right spot? And, so what, just as far as the process goes, so, and now you're saying eight is okay. Is that just because the math works? How did you come up with three to begin with?
Well, the reason I came up with three is within consultation with the Guild. And the Guild actually said, Jim, we're not sure that anybody would buy it. So I said, well, let's put a cap on it then and, and see if we can capture three. So it was no, there was no science behind it. It was just a conversation with teacher leadership in the sense of what we thought might be possible in this given year. They, they've been as surprised as, as I have been. Because there was no indication that there was this many people who were thinking about it. But they didn't have any indication. And, you know, this is a private decision. So there's nothing, nothing in particular that would say to somebody who's thinking about retiring that they would be, you know, be open about it. I mean, people are in their home with their spouses, and they're trying to figure out their math and their income and so forth. And I think that the signal from the board was, this may not always happen, which is, we've said now three years in a row. But I think people are internalizing that, and they know that at some point, the board may turn around and say, this isn't the year we wanna have an incentive.
So, and, and I, I understand that. It makes sense to me. When a teacher now has come out and said that they would like to retire early and had gone through that whole emotional process of finally declaring it, and if we as a board turn that down, you know, I think that would be a hard thing as well. And I wonder if going forward, you know, and just saying it now because we won't think of it then, is if we decide on a number, should the door close then when we get that number? Rather than, because people have put in their names now. This has been up in the air for them. There's been uncertainty in.
I would almost go the opposite way from this experience. This reminds me of what Todd went through when he declared the graduation date in the calendar. And we kinda declared that three was the number. I think it would be smarter for us just to simply not have a number.
Okay.
But we had such a low number because the feedback from, from the staff was, there wasn't anybody who was interested.
And I, I, that's the same solution. Right. And that's, that's fine by me too. But I, I just wanted to try to preclude being in this kind of position again.
I understand, yeah. I do understand completely.
And, and I guess, and just to tie this to other discussions we have as well with evaluation and, and all, I think it'd be very good to have exit interviews with people who retire early.
Yeah.
And kind of, because I think they've offered our district so much, and I think those parting words also can be very informative for us moving forward.
I'd be glad to do that.
Denise?
Yes, you're right, I am gonna say it. These are some amazing teachers. I don't know them all, but I know many. And they've just, they're just amazing. And I'm sad to see them go in one way, although I certainly appreciate, you know, I mean, there is a time. But, but my question again is, you know, I am looking at the dollars and saying, you know, that is a lot of money. And so it sounds like, in terms of where this money is coming from, part of it is that LGC is what you're saying, is that's how we find the money in this year's budget, is to use part of that for that. And then, including probably, you said two in next year's budget, although it's not currently budgeted in there. Is that right?
Right. We would get it through either the retirements themselves or through unanticipated revenue. It's not a huge obstacle for us to overcome. Denise? I just have, I'm sitting here looking at this list, and over the last three years, we've had, this retirement incentive has been really important for us to make our budget goal each year. I mean, I, I don't even have the total numbers, but it's a lot of people who've retired. I keep thinking about that Warren Article VI, which is kind of our insurance policy. And at some point, this is gonna dry up. I mean, you go back to, you know, when we were sitting in October 23rd, without all the yellow sheets, we were at three, four, 3.4 percent, and we were looking at a four-tenth of a percent cut just to make our goal. And I, I think when I'm looking at this, there's only so many times we're gonna be able to go to the well with this. It really is. We've been very, very, very lucky with the insurance coming under and with these retirement incentives have allowed us to do a lot of things. And I think that it's, you know, there's gonna come a time that this is not gonna work. And I, I mean, I know I'm, my family knows I'm a total worrier about money. But it's like, that's why I keep looking at that self-insurance policy. That's, that's at some point really gonna be important to us, I think. Because again, you know, if we're at 3.4 percent with that stack of yellow sheets, a lot of which were really critical for our services, we're gonna end up making some really hard cuts. And those cuts are gonna be very disruptive. I mean, what, what Jim has really tried to work on, I think, is providing this level base, you know, that there aren't these fluctuations, and so that the system is allowed to really improve. And, you know, I, it worries me when I look at this list, that this, you know, at some point, this is not gonna be there. And some very, very difficult disruptive decisions may come down our way.
Isn't that balanced, though, by the fact that the new hirees will be bringing the overall budget down because they'll be, their salaries will be left?
And well, I mean, again, like in the future.
Well, they can keep doing it.
You're not gonna be able to keep doing it. That's my point.
Well, people keep getting older.
You have to be a manager.
Can I call you on that one? Speak for yourself. I'm gonna be down.
So, could we have a motion to approve these eight? Kenny?
I would like to make the motion that we improve, we approve the mandatory retirement incentive participants. We have eight of them, and with a very sincere thank you to all the years they put into our district.
Moved by Kenny. Is there a second? Seconded by Al. Is there further discussion on this? No? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, motion passes. Again, a swift gratitude for all they've done. Okay, we have, the only remaining official business would be a motion to approve the list of policies. And Maria, I think you're gonna pull one of them, is that right?
Yes, the IGA, please for further discussion on the policy committee.
Okay, so could we have a motion unless we wanna divide the issue to approve the two policies for first read? Kenny?
I move that we accept policy I H A H N I H A K for first read.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Denise. Is there discussion on this? Al?
I just have a question. Like, when I look at I H A K, the character and citizen education, there's a lot of striking going on. So what was the, I mean, it was, it basically struck the whole body. So what was the thought process there?
Jim, I guess I could take a crack at it. I, I think a lot of, what we struck was, I mean, there were kind of some things where what we might try to reach for as far as character, but there were soft definitions, and people might have different values. And then there's the question of, what is a society we really are? And so there just wasn't the need for that aspiration, or even really the politics in the policy. I think it just so summed it up to say that we want ethical values. And rather than defining ethical values, which to me limits them, I think that it opens it up more. And then I think, and I believe it was Maria's idea, which I think is very good, is it puts us, it gives us that responsibility that we're supposed to be modeling this character as well. That it's not just students who are supposed to be achieving this, but we also play a role in this too. So, does that sound right to?
Yes.
Yep.
And that Maria likes short policies.
We're trying to get it down to one.
We know that about you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Sarah?
I, on that same policy, and someone who's good at writing, it's, that first sentence bothers me. Because it seems to me to be saying that the school board assumes it's later to frill, okay? By endorsing and modeling character and citizenship education. Which means, sounds to me like we're endorsing and modeling both of those things, which we're not. We're endorsing, we're modeling character and we're endorsing citizenship education. So I'm not modeling citizenship education. I'm supposed to model character. You get what I mean?
Uh huh.
So anyway, I don't like that sentence. I don't know how to fix it, but.
Is that the only one we left?
That's right.
So just, just to reverse, by modeling character and endorsing citizenship education, is that?
That would make me happy.
Okay.
This is first read.
Okay.
That sounds great.
Excellent.
Okay, so could that come back?
Will work.
Okay, okay.
That's number one.
Maria's goal is to get it down to yes.
So we can, so we could, that could come back to us with that change. So is there other comments on?
I have a comment on the word language.
Okay.
The sentence at the end of the first paragraph, where it says, middle school and high school, and when possible, at the elementary. I can let it go, but it seems a little like strategic planning language to me. It doesn't seem like policy language. This is being said by someone who's not on the policy committee.
That's the easiest place to say it.
So, yeah, so I guess, as I said, I could go with it, but it just seems like we are currently offering it at the middle and the high school level. And the fact that we would like to eventually offer it at the elementary level does not belong in a policy, but rather belongs in a strategic plan.
Good, we can strike it.
So maybe just end it at, right.
Offer it to students and just keep out.
I guess, I'm sorry.
Kenny?
Just to kind of answer that, and I see exactly the point that you're saying, but I think it should be a policy of the board, that we want to have foreign language at elementary school. I think that's more than a strategic plan, that should be a policy. And so I think this really is setting that bar for us, that this is something we need to, to do. So I see it a little differently, I guess.
Sarah, the committee was struggling with the fact that it was very declaratory.
Okay.
And we don't have an elementary program. So they were looking for something that wasn't quite declaratory, that we, we did when we didn't. And they were trying to figure out a way of keeping the language but being true to what it is we actually do.
Okay.
That was the struggle they were having.
We'll talk about that.
They have to say if you add in the elementary, then we, that means we have to add a foreign language program to the elementary.
That was the struggle we were having. We don't.
Trying to give yourself.
It felt like the policy wasn't being, you know, adhered to.
Although there is the Chinese.
It's still an after-school program. We also have Latin after-school, so, but it's not really part of the program.
Yeah. And the point that I've made before is that if you're gonna put something in, what are you gonna take out? There's the law of physics. You can't just add and not take anything out unless you then shorten everything out. You know, it's, I mean, and I think even with the music, and the schedule of the music, we've seen that, you know, you add something in, it has, and so I think that, I like the, and when possible, because I think you have to look at that. You're gonna have the Common Core standards with coming out in social studies and science. And, you know, that's gonna be, yeah, that's gonna be a big demand upon schools. And then you're gonna say, and not that we shouldn't, but I'm just saying, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to make some decisions, and just to say we're gonna have it, I think, to keep the, the tentativeness of this, I think it's good.
That's why I like the when possible.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so.
Oh, just, I think, you know, going along with Maria, then like somewhere else already said, it just offered to students, period.
Okay.
Just cut out everything and.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that would work.
We could do that.
Yeah.
When possible.
It's shorter?
I'm like, it's shorter.
Shorter, okay.
But, but just, the reason we couldn't do it is because we're not offering it to students.
Yeah, so you gotta say when possible to all students. But I think that was actually saying drop the high school and the middle school and just say two students. Don't declare what levels.
Two students, okay.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Okay, so we, we'll have another crack at this. So could we have a vote on these two policies for first read? Is, is the motion, I think the motion's been made.
We have a motion. Yeah, we already have a motion.
Okay, all those, further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in the affirmative. These two policies pass on first read. The IG is pulled, so we just have to vote on the deletion of, what is it?
ECB.
Deletion of ECB. Okay, could I have a motion? Kenny?
I move that we delete policy ECB. We already have a policy that takes care of this.
A move by Kenny, seconded by Al. Discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hands. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in the affirmative, the policy's deleted. Okay, committee updates? I think there's nothing else, right? No?
Right.
Committee updates?
An interesting, we had an interesting presentation last night that the Sustainability Committee from Foss Manufacturing Company, which is a local factory that takes recycled plastic bottles, shreds them and makes them into material for building anything from tennis shoes to indoor/outdoor carpet. And it's all done locally on the plant. And now they're getting their bottles primarily from our recycling, recycle station, which bundle them up and transport them over to China. And in China, they float them in their rivers and take out the plastic that floats from their rivers and then shred them all up and send them back to Foss. And Foss turns them into this plastic material. And they were, approached the Sustainability Committee with a plan to try to get our plastic bottles directly from here to Hampton so that we could bypass this transportation. So it was just, they were very upfront about it, you know, they profit from this. This is something that they do that would get a economic benefit from it. But more important to them was a way of just dealing with these millions of plastic bottles that every day are increasing. And they put out numbers which are astonishing about the numbers of plastic bottles that we are making and using and what goes with them. So the Sustainability Committee vacillated between once, on one side, we don't want to encourage people to use plastic bottles. And on the other side, we've got this huge amount of plastic bottles that have to be used somehow. And now only about 30% of them are actually being recycled with the present. You know, you take your things off to the recycling center and put it in front of your yard, but only about 30% of the stuff actually gets recycled. And this would be a way of increasing that recycle amount. And the other, and the part of it was, it was that there would be, from Foss Energy would, would pay Oyster River back money for, to like five cents a bottle basically, for everything they got. And that, that could be used in material and also could be, one of the ideas that we threw around was using it for, you know, fundraising for the track and things, which would be an incentive for students. They wanted, they proposed that, you know, once a week, every student bring in five plastic bottles from home. And if they had that happened, they'd basically be able to run their whole plant and run, make all of these products and, and money would come back to Oyster River. So they're looking at that not only at Oyster River, but also at other, other school systems in New Hampshire. But it was an interesting idea.
Todd's eyes are ka-chinging back there.
Anyway, it was a funny idea. Exact, I'm sorry, yes, a pound, yes.
Did you have the graduation gowns that we use or recycled plastic?
There you go.
Maria?
Didn't we get an email to the policy committee about, from John Carroll?
John Carroll, yeah.
Asking us to do away with all bottles in the school system.
Might get a different one now.
Yeah, what difficulty with that is that the, the, the school program, lunch program, whatever it's called, makes a lot of money on their bottled water.
Pretty.
It's a huge, it's their biggest revenue source, basically. They make $50,000 on, you know, on the school bottles.
So now we have a place to put them, so it's a win-win.
It's a win-win, right.
You can profit double that.
Kenny?
That's very interesting, but it is kind of this thing that we incentivize people to bring in bottles. What is this thing about floating them in the rivers in China?
They go to, they, they take the, you know, bundles of plastic and they take them to not just China, but a lot of the rest of the world. And one of the ways, one of the, again, I don't really know how common this is, but one of the ways to sort the plastic is because glass and plastic float at different levels. You just dump everything into a river and then just sort of scoop up the stuff, like the light plastic that's easy to recycle off the top. And everything that just dumps to the bottom, you just, that's it, just washes out to the sea. You never have to worry about it.
Seaglass.
Yeah, so it's, it's an awful, everything is awful. And, you know, it just contributes to that continent of plastic that's lying in the middle of the Pacific Ocean too, so.
Well, I'd love to get into this more, but I, I don't mean to shut you off.
Other, other committee updates? Hearing none? Public comment?
David Taylor from Durham. I have another nitpick on the minutes. In the, on page two of the minutes, you have a, I assume is the policy required record of the non-meeting and it doesn't include the attendees or the time the meeting was ended. Thank you.
So who is it the, we should get that information into the minutes then. Okay. Okay, other public comment? Okay, future meeting, the next meeting will be...
Do we need the motion to amend the minutes that we voted on to include this?
Probably technically.
Okay.
I saw a move.
Moved by Maria to include the time and attendees for the non-meeting, right? Seconded by Ed. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in the affirmative. Okay. Future meeting, next meeting is 17th. So could I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Maria, seconded by Ed. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Meeting's adjourned.
The excitement showed by that. Every...